Yeah, just a minor and I mean, I mean, I can, but we don't need to. Parts of the West Side should be too.
It depends what the topic is and what your.
Marketing. So they should by the end of December have theirs.
Yeah.
All ready to go. And then say general and deep branch, I think, was the other one. Call me, my uncle. Um, they're going.
You want to bring it up during the, at the end of the.
I mean, we could pass you, but I mean, I just thought. I mean, you think it's worth it. It's not a big update, but it's just.
Although if you wait till December, it'll be about there in case they have any delays.
Yeah, I know, I can just say it has. We could probably do it out there.
Just in case they don't.
Exactly.
Weather or.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, it's six o'clock, so I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting of the Edgefield County Council to order on November the first, two thousand and twenty-two, six P. M. Good to see everybody here tonight. We'll begin with the invocation by Minister Aretha Eubanks, Chalk Hill Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
May we please all bow our heads? Dear gracious and loving Father, we come to you right now, God, first and foremost, to say thank you, Lord. Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here this afternoon, God. For right now, God, your servant is coming before you with a petition, Lord. Lord, I'm asking right now in the name of Jesus that you will bless our council, who is the leaders of our county, God. Bless them, encourage them, uplift them, God, so that they shall not grow weary in their well doing, God. Lord, allow them not to faint. And Lord, to our community of which we do dearly love, Lord, continue to hold them, unite them, and forever keep us all. Lord, I'm asking that you cover us all from the top of our head to the sole of our feet, so that we all shall be blessed and reigning who we are inside of you, God. And Lord, when this day is over, as we return home, allow us to go in your grace, God. Allow everything to be decent and in order. And in Jesus' name I do pray with much love. Amen. Amen. Amen.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Counsel, for the approval of the agenda, as we often do, I'd like to see if we can move new business number one, the resolution, to right after the approval of the minutes, so that people don't have to stay for the whole meeting if they don't want to. Is there any objection to that? Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda as I have indicated?
So movements, Chairman.
I believe Mr. Talbot makes the motion and Dr. Kenyon second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the minutes from October eleventh, our regular meeting. Any questions or comments from counsel on the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Send me.
Okay, Councilwoman Ireland makes the motions, is there a second? Dr. Kenyon, seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, because we have moved it to the top of the agenda, is a resolution. Let me turn my page here. This is the consideration of approval of resolution number twenty-one, twenty-two, eleven fifty-one, a resolution recognizing James Fab Burt for his many years of service to Edgefield County. And with that, counsel, and for all those here, I'd like to read the resolution before we vote on it. This is a resolution recognizing James Fab Burt for his many years of service to Edgefield County, whereas Edgefield County Council wishes to recognize those persons who have dedicated their lives to provide service to the citizens of Edgefield County. And whereas James Fab Burt, having recently celebrated his eightieth birthday and through his twenty-one years of service as a reserve deputy for the Edgefield County Sheriff's Department and member of the Edgefield County Rescue Squad for twenty years, has demonstrated his commitment to the safety and welfare of the citizens of Edgefield County. And whereas Mr. Burt has served over thirty-seven consecutive years as a commissioner of the Edgefield County Planning Commission, including ten years as chairman, which incurred personal sacrifice by dedicating countless hours of his time without recognition or reward. And whereas Mr. Burt, through his unwavering commitment and willingness to serve, speaks not only to the quality of his character, but has truly inspired those he has worked with and served with. And whereas Mr. Burt has consistently demonstrated his desire to serve Edgefield County with respect, fairness, integrity, and a level of commitment that has set an amazing precedent for others whom wish to serve. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Edgefield County Council in session duly assembled this first day of November, two thousand and twenty-two, that we honor and recognize James Fab Burt for his dedicated service to Edgefield County. Is there a motion from counsel to accept this resolution?
So movements, Chairman.
Mr. Talbot makes the motion, Dr. Kenyon, seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. I'd like to see if we can get a photo and we can present this to you, Fab. So let's do it this way, my art director this from up here, if that's all right. So I'd like Fab and his family to come stand right in front of the podium. I know we've got the planning commission here tonight, would y'all please stand with him on this side? And county council be with him on this side, how about that? Can we do that? And we'll see if we can all get in the picture. Maybe since you're tall, can we even come stand right here? That way you can see between, you can see, put all the family right here together, see. Thank y'all all for being here tonight, too. So with that presentation, that moves us to comments from the public. This is public comment period number one of two, did anyone sign up for this one? Okay, so counsel, no one signed up, so I'll close this public comment period and move on to reports, any questions or comments on the reports? Hearing none, we'll go to old business. Number one, under old business, is consideration approval of second reading of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven ninety to modify section twenty-four seventy-nine recreational vehicle parks and twenty-four ninety-one campgrounds of the Code of Ordnance. I'll ask our administrator if there's anything new or different we need to know about this one.
Yes, thank you, the planning commission recently took a look at campgrounds and RV parks. The ordinance currently combines both of them. They recommended that they be broken apart to represent the details of each. We're asking for your approval on second reading. But I wanted to bring something to council's attention. During the last meeting, there were two sections for RV parks. One section used the phrase aesthetically pleasing. And per discussion from the October council meeting, that version was removed because that's hard to define. So you will now find in the exhibit one campground section and one RV park section.
Anything else, Mr. Administrator?
No.
All right, counsel, comments or questions on this ordinance? Hearing none, is there a motion to give second reading approval of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven ninety?
Send me.
Ms. Ireland makes the motions, is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Talbot, seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, under old business number two, consideration approval of second reading of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven ninety-one to rezone parcel number one forty-five oh nine zero zero, zero forty-four, zero zero zero, from general residential to general commercial. Again, I'll ask the administrator, is there anything we need to know about this one since first reading?
I have no new information to share on this issue.
Counsel, we discussed this some last time, other questions or comments that we need to take up?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I know the last time I didn't vote on it, but I didn't have the proper information that I was seeking for. But after doing some research and study, I'm ready to go forward. At that, I'll make a motion to approve this as second reading.
Mr. Talbot makes the motion to give second reading to ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven ninety-one, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cooper, seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. We're now down to new business, and we've already taken care of number one under new business, so we'll go to number two under new business, which is consideration of approval of Blue Sky Greystone's bid of five hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars to construct a new animal control facility. I'll turn this over to the administrator to walk us through this one, please.
Thank you. As council is aware, Aiken County notified us earlier this year that they would no longer be able to accept our animals due to capacity issues with their facility. The original deadline was at the end of this year. Once we began the process to construct our own animal control facility, to put it out for bid, they agreed to extend it until we could complete that project. If approved by council, this facility would be constructed on the same parcel as the law enforcement center at the rear of it. And it should be completed sometime next summer. Now, in September, we received three bids. The lowest bid of five hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars was rejected due to the lack of a structural license. This particular contractor had a interior renovation license that does not allow structural work. So of the remaining two qualified bids, Greystone had the lowest remaining bid. They are a local contractor and they had the correct license. The bids were close to our estimated cost, so we feel really good about them. And we recommend using American Rescue Plan funds to pay for the shelter. That's all.
Okay, questions or comments from counsel?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have a question, I know it said unqualified bid. Could you explain a little bit more in detail on that?
Certainly. The bid that we had to reject, that particular builder had a license that allowed them to do interior renovations. It would not allow them to erect a structure, to do structural work. And because we had two bidders that met the qualifications, we had to reject that one.
Okay, another question I have, okay, now he had, you said unqualified bid, but yet and still, if he could get this bid, we can, why did I, I'm looking at the lowest bidder, I'm looking at taxpayer money right now. I'm quite sure somewhere in there, he could be able, he went able to do all the renovation or whatever he had to do, he could contract it out. I'm just saying.
I think our concern would be that that would put us in legal jeopardy because we had two qualified bidders that submitted bids, but I could let Doc speak to that.
Oh, you're not about to turn there, you don't want.
Or Andrew.
Yeah. You know, the unqualified bid, if, you know, we're starting to talk about contingencies for the bid, whether they'll have assistance or something like that, and it said that the lowest bid, they're all within the same range. You know, the other bid, they're qualified, they made all qualifications of the, you know, the proposal. And so I guess, you know, if somebody doesn't meet the qualifications for a proposal, you have to reject that bid.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So if I bid on this building here to paint it, and I don't have the right credentials on the outside of the building, I can subcontract that and be responsible?
If you don't have the license, I mean, your bidding is to do that work.
I have the license for the on the inside, because I'm thinking C and B have the license to do the work, but they can subcontract, am I right?
I mean, you're talking between erection of a building and doing interior work on the building, that's a pretty major difference.
That's what I'm asking, yeah, I'm asking, and what?
You won't, let me interrupt you one second, you, Doc, you want to take that?
Just to clarify, in this particular case, it's not about the subcontracting of the job. In this particular case, we have three bidders, two of them are fully contracted to do the entire bid. One of them is not. If we were to accept the underqualified bidder instead of the qualified bidders, we put ourselves in a legal situation where we could be sued by the qualified bidders for accepting their bid.
So let me clarify, this is, we're not talking about painting the inside, we're talking about the, this bid project was for the entire erect, building it.
Erecting the building and doing all the interior work.
Encompassing everything, so we're not talking about piecemealing it out and subcontracting it out, we're talking about people who will do everything in one.
So in order to do structural work, you have to have a general contractor's license that's designated as building. This is the license that the lowest bidder does not have. He has the interior renovations license, which allows him to do interior work like sheet rocking, putting up partitions, things of that nature. But that disqualifies him from actually erecting the building itself.
And we'd still have to find someone else to build the building, he could only go in and paint it.
We would have to hire another general contractor to come in, build the building, and then he would have to come in and finish the building. And we can't do that in this case because that would put us in legal jeopardy of being sued by the qualified bidders that we have on.
So let me ask you this, his bid, I mean, obviously, he must know he can't build this building, so is his bid, this, this five hundred fifty-three thousand plus dollars is for painting?
No.
No, I was saying painting Tiffany for a prime example.
Right.
Let's get painted out of the situation.
So what was his bid for, if he can't build it?
Well, his bid was for the entire project, but he would have to subcontract out to another builder to actually erect the building. In this particular case, we cannot allow that because we have qualified bidders that bid. And we would be putting ourselves in legal jeopardy.
And I was only asking the question for the public.
Okay.
That was, I wasn't talking about the painting.
It's a legal issue.
Okay.
It's a legal issue.
Okay, that's all we want to know.
Thank you.
If I could also, if there was a question, Greystone is a Edgefield County builder.
Definitely, I know.
And Greystone could have asked for that five percent local preference option, which then have made him lower than the other person who's out of the county.
Again, I want to repeat, I wasn't talking about no painting, I just wanted clear for the public. You know, understand, okay?
Any other questions or comments from counsel? And if everybody's good, is there a motion to approve the Blue Sky Greystone bid of five hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars?
Send me.
Second.
All right, so Ms. Ireland makes a motion and Mr. Cooper, seconds, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, counsel, moving quickly here, comments from the public number two, did we have anyone from the clerk who signed up? Apparently, the answer is yes. All right, thank you. All right, so for this public comment period, I would remind our speaker that it's a five-minute limitation in time, so. And the clerk keeps time and she lets us know at four minutes and five minutes, so this is, I might mispronounce your first name, Pauline?
It's Pauline Hatch. And thank you for this opportunity. I am the president of Paws and Hoos Rescue, which is a registered South Carolina charity, as well as a not-for-profit 501(c). And our mission is dedicated toward the welfare of animals, and we raise funds and awareness toward this mission. And our campaign over the last several years has been the spaying of feral cats in Edgefield County. As we all know, this is not a simple task, and we understand it's not solved in one month or one year. Over the last two years, we've spayed more than sixty-five cats. And I work with Edgefield Veterinarian, as well as Aiken SPCA, to spay and neuter as many as we can catch and wrangle up, so to speak. I come to you today to express support for the new county animal shelter project, and I would like to take the opportunity to provide several comments and suggestions, which can be taken at their face value. With regards to animal shelters, the lack of animal shelter cap, capabilities and the inability, unavailability and current overwhelmed resources of local veterinarian services has caused an explosion of the unwanted pet and feral cat problem in Edgefield County. Well, throughout the entire United States. The purpose and mission of the shelter needs to be very clearly outlined and communicated to the community in order to get the full support of the community. Will this new shelter be a full-service operation? Will it be a transfer station, working with volunteer groups to ensure animals are in foster care when the owners cannot be contacted, or it, there is a hold period before adoption? If it's a transfer station, then what becomes of the animals then? Understanding each option is probably beyond the planned budget of the new shelter, but the county has a obligation, and it behooves you guys to perform as much outreach to the community so that they get behind the project and they support you in every aspect. But if there's ambiguity in the communication and the message, it just comes back to bite everybody. There needs to be better cooperation between the new shelter and the other CSRA veterinarians. The current situation only using Edgefield Veterinarian and Aiken SPCA is really absurd. It doesn't accommodate anywhere near the volume. The other CSRA veterinarians such as Johnston, Aiken, North Augusta, that need to be approached, contractual arrangements need to be made to encourage residents to seek out the help, either through a rescue organization like mine or through the voucher system that you all just recently updated. Even with a voucher, it's difficult to obtain an appointment with these too limited resources. The consequence of the overpopulation is that the organizations such as myself have to schedule an appointment to have a feral spayed. It is no feral that is currently caught on schedule. The veterinarians currently assess a financial penalty for last-minute cancellations when you did not catch a feral. How can a feral be guaranteed to be caught and make a scheduled appointment? Thus, many citizens choose to ignore the problem rather than take the responsibility and the possible penalty that it incurs. So I just bring this up because the limitations of only using SPCA, Aiken, and Edgefield don't address this problem at all. And I wanted to end with a unrelated to the shelter, but sort of related. The penalties currently outlawed, outlined in South Carolina law forty-seven, three fifty, regarding loose dogs and penalties is laughably small and lack deterrent ability to stop the chronic abusers out there. It is up to the county pursuant to forty-seven, three twenty, to enact meaningful regulation in this regard. Okay, thanks, I'll finish quickly. Chapter six of the county code is inadequate to stop the current attitude of some residents who allow their dogs to roam unrestrained, causing injury to other animals and livestock. And for example, it says it's twenty dollars for the first penalty. All dogs get loose once in a while, but it's thirty dollars from that point on. It needs to be, for example, twenty dollars for the first offender. Good owners mess up, fences break, those kind of things. But a hundred dollars for the second, I'm just using an example from other jurisdictions. A thousand dollars for the third offense and mandatory spay and neuter at their owner's expense. And finally, the fourth time that they lose the animal, it's confiscated. Because unless you make the penalty harsh enough, some people are just going to continue to take their twenty-dollar fine or whatever it is and kind of thumb their nose at the sheriff and at the county. So I thank you for these opportunities to speak on this issue.
Thank you. And thank you for your remarks, I think I can say that probably, I think the next meeting will have our animal control ordinance, perhaps?
December or January.
Okay, so we're working on that now, so I tell you that just to say, watch and see when it's coming up, see when we discuss that ordinance, because that's, we'll take up things that you're talking about. We're working on that now. Okay. All right, so counsel, that's everyone who signed up for the second public comment period, so I will close that and move to the administrator's report.
Thank you. On the issue of the fire departments, as we've discussed before, the fire departments have been experiencing issues with recruitment. They've expressed a need for additional training, and our EMA manager, Foster Crowder, is assisting the fire departments with these issues. He recently met with them, two representatives of the Fire Academy came down. They made a presentation on recruitment, training, possible incentives. We're going to take the information that they shared and expand on that in the coming weeks. In addition, we're exploring opportunities to partner with Strong Thurman Career Center and Piedmont Tech to see what we could do to develop new firefighters through training opportunities. The second item on the Sweetwater Community Center, a system has been installed that allows key codes to give renters access to the facility. No more coming to Edgefield to pick up a key, returning a key. Aretha's done a great job streamlining that process. We're currently in website development now, so we'll have a streamlined rental process as well, so we're looking forward to that. Foundation repairs have been made on the center, and the floor refinishing is scheduled for February. And that's because that's where we have a break in rental sufficient to get that done. On the animal control facility issue, thank you for approving that, we're now looking at the ordinance needs of the facility. We looked at the Aiken County ordinance, we've made modifications to simplify it. Hart Clark and Jason Ramey presented it to the planning commission for review during a recent work session, I think two members of council attended. And we appreciate the efforts that they put into revising this ordinance. We're looking forward to bringing that, hopefully in December. We'd like a lot more comments, so possibly in January. But we're going to bring it to council very soon. We need to obviously have this in place before next summer when the new facility opens. As things progress from that point, we'll also have to partner with a local veterinarian. We need to set up a website, arrange staffing, and establish a mechanism for adopting out pets, whether that be in-house with our existing staff or through some nonprofit arrangement, but we're exploring those opportunities right now. On the law enforcement center, there are two items to report here. The first one, after numerous meetings and phone conferences, collecting and sharing documents, and Roger was involved in in most of that, I just came into it lately, we received our standard emporers rating on our bonds, and we received an A-plus, which is not. our standard emporers rating on our bonds, and we received an A+, which is not bad for a rural county. I'd like to quote from the report. Standard emporers says, "The rating reflects our view of Edgefield County's history of consistent budgetary performance and conservative budgeting practices, which have enabled it to build very strong reserves." We are very happy with that rating. Second, our pre-construction meeting for the law enforcement center is in two days. I think our bond closing is on the 20th second, and we expect things to progress very rapidly from that point. There is a legislative delegation meeting right here in council chambers, November 9th at 6:00 p.m. Council is invited, of course, and this meeting is open to the public. Again, that's November 9th at 6:00 p.m. right here. I would like to acknowledge Leigh Anne Anderson, our HR Director. Many of you know she recently organized our worksite screening for our employees, which takes a lot of work, a lot of organization. It's like herding cats. So she did a great job with that last Wednesday, and our goal each year will be to increase participation and find incentives to increase participation. I would like to mention Lakeisha Bryant for her work on grants. I recently discovered that the total of grants completed and grants in process for 2022 exceeds $1 million. It covers everything from school resource officer funding to park improvements. I know we all appreciate her hard work in securing those funds for the county. And finally, I've been on the job for just a little over two weeks now, and I'd like to find everyone who's helped me make this transition from council members, Aretha, my lifeline there, Taz, Roger Laduke, of course, and Doc. So I appreciate that. I'm glad to be here. It probably tells, a little nervous getting going, but I'm glad to be here and I appreciate everyone's help getting adjusted. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the administrator? Okay. Hearing none. Thank you. So I'll move to my comments, which are, was going to say, we have a, you know, we had a short agenda tonight, but I think that's always a good way to break in a new administrator. So I appreciate council and everyone working through tonight's issues. And in the spirit of a brief meeting, I only have one item to announce. The December meeting of the county council marks the last meeting for Scott Cooper as a county council member. So as we know, he's chosen not to run for reelection. In honor of his service, we will have a reception for him at the December 6th county council meeting. The reception is 4:30 to 5:45. Our meeting, to remind you, begins at 6:00 that night. This reception will be held right here in the council chambers, and we encourage all employees, public, elected officials, and all others to come out and chat with him and wish him well. Refreshments will be served, and we hope to see a lot of people there. That's all I have tonight, council. There being no other business, I'd certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Mr. Talbert makes the motions. There are seconds.
Second.
Mr. Cooper seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Well, that was probably our shortest, in how long? I think we've gotten out of here. Well, I like these 30 minutes.